Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting for today. We'll all stand now for a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silent meditation.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, welcome to the City Council meeting for August 6, 2018. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk has read that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposing. The applicant may then make a short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the City Council will vote on resolutions and items under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to the adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Teresa, would you call our first item of business today?
Yes, and we ask that individuals giving testimony please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and to sign in on the pink sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three.
Do any conversation, discussion of these items? I'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry.
If not, we can vote on these items.
Sorry, is anyone in the audience that would like to testify on the items on the consent agenda? Thank you. I'm sorry, Teresa, would you please?
All right, that's okay. Item 1A was introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Christensen, second by Councilwoman Eskridge. Any additional discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Then items 1B and 2A through C were introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilwoman Eskridge, a second by Councilwoman Raybold. Is there any discussion? Would you call the roll on these items?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next, then, are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items 4A and B together. They're the application of Rusty Taco for a Class I liquor license at 210 North 14th Street, Suite 4, and the related manager application of Robert Harris.
Good afternoon.
Do you gentlemen raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
We do.
Thank you. Just state your names and addresses.
Steve Stender, it's S.T.E.V.E.N., S.T.E.N.D.E.R., 19732 Chandler Street, Gretna, Nebraska, 68028.
If you'd sign in while the other young man introduces.
Robert Harris, R.O.B.E.R.T., H.A.R.R.I.S., 2464 Harney Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68113.
Mr. Harris, would you sign in too if you can? And gentlemen, tell us about your application. What brings you here today?
We are kind of a street-style Mexican restaurant. We sell just tacos, nothing else but tacos, except for margaritas and beers, and some chips. We are under the name R Taco in Omaha. We have two restaurants there. Actually, they're going to get changed to Rusty Taco pretty soon, too, but we're going to start this one out as Rusty Taco. It's a national chain. There's about 35 of us, mostly in Texas, Colorado, and Minneapolis, Minnesota. So it's a nice place to come, get some tacos, have a margarita, hang out, so.
Are there questions from the council?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Eskridge, yes?
Thank you. The recommendation from Lincoln Police was that this be a conditional license. Do you understand that or whatever?
Yep, he explained it to us.
Okay, and that condition is acceptable to you?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Councilwoman Gaylord Baird, you'd like?
I just wanted to say that I'm going to support the application for the license. Makes perfect sense. I'm not inclined to support the manager application, and it's because of the multiple, the two DUIs. One, of course, was a long time ago. We usually are more forgiving with things that happen in the past. The more recent one was just three years ago, and, you know, it's just really important to have the laws taken very seriously when it comes to the dispensation of alcohol. I just wonder if you want to have a chance to say anything about that before we have our vote?
Yeah, that was a really dumb decision, A, first of all. A really rough time of my life. Fiancee and I broke up. I lost my software business at the same time. So it just wasn't a very good place and wasn't making a wise decision at that time. Since then, you know, I definitely learned my lesson. I've taken a lot of different counseling there, therefore, that was required, and, you know, straight and narrow, feeling good about where I'm at, and, yeah, apologize about a poor decision I made.
Can I add a little bit?
Yes, please.
Bob has been working for us since, actually, day one at our Maple location for two and a half years. Actually, started out just kind of working one of the positions and then moved up into the ranks and became manager, and we asked him to come down here to open the Lincoln ones. He's actually going to move down to Lincoln and live down here, and has been doing an exceptional job, very careful about all the rules, all the regulations. We talked to our people the very first day, the second they walked through the door, and explained to them how important everything is, you know, and so far, we haven't had any violations or anything even close in Omaha. So he's done a good job so far.
It's good to hear. Are there?
Yeah, that is good to hear.
Other comments from the council? Anyone in the audience like to testify on this item, a second time? Thank you very much, gentlemen. I appreciate you. We'll move on to our next item, and we'll vote at the end of the day.
Okay.
At the end of the section, actually. Teresa, our next item?
All right, next is the manager application of Lori Greenwood for Eagles Fraternal Order 147 at 500 West Industrial Lake Drive. Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your name and address, Lori.
Lori Greenwood. It's L.O.R.I.G.R.E.E.N.W.O.O.D., and it's 1537 West Palm, 68522.
Thank you, Ms. Greenwood, for coming. And before you leave, you can do it as you asked, but tell us a little bit about your application.
I have been working at the Eagles Club for the past almost 10 years, and they recently, they do a, where they change their trustees and that kind of thing, and the new trustees, the one that was the bar manager is no longer part of the organization, so they've asked me to step up and take over this role.
Other questions from the council of Ms. Greenwood?
Mm-hmm.
Is anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Well, thank you very much for coming forward. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Teresa, are we ready for our next one?
Yes, next would be the application of The Bay or Rabal Mill for an SDL to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 246 feet by 142 feet at The Bay at 2005 Y Street on August 25th between 7:30 a.m. and 11:30 p.m.
Good afternoon, welcome.
No oath on SDLs.
Aaron Markley, first name A.A.R.O.N. Markley, M.A.R.K.L.E.Y. Address 6249 Oak Hills Plaza, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137.
Aaron, thanks for coming. Tell us about your application, special designated license.
Yes, so we're a nonprofit organization headquartered out of The Bay. Rabal Mill is a recent nonprofit, the product of a merger between The Bay, which has a facility here in Lincoln, the 2005 Y Street, and then here in Nebraska, a statewide organization. Both have existed for the past eight years now, I believe. This event is a fundraiser to help further our mission, which is to end generational poverty, one young person at a time.
Excellent, thank you. Are there questions from the council? Councilwoman Gaylord, Raybold?
So what kind of activities go on at an anti-gala?
Yes, so in thinking about the people that we serve and our audience, while we have nothing against galas, we figured that a traditional gala probably isn't the most fitting, I guess, setting for one of our fundraisers. So when we say anti-gala, we, you know, throwing out the traditional black tie, you know, high-ticket kind of fundraiser, the event is free and open to the public. However, a $20 donation is suggested. More will help cover the cost of people who can't afford to actually come and enjoy the festivities. So at the actual festival, we have a skateboard competition where we have some of the region's best skateboarders coming in to compete for cash prizes. We have a stage set up outside where we have local and national bands performing, as well as performing at our all-ages venue inside throughout the day as well. We have a food truck coming. We also are, will be teaching workshops throughout the day in our digital arts lab. So a lot of fun, family-friendly activities. I guess, I'm sorry, I should maybe add, the reason why I'm here, ZipLine Brewing Company is helping us out with this event. They're providing the licensed staff to actually pour the beer. They are our exclusive beer partner, and they're providing the, you know, the tap systems and stuff like that to pour the beers and stuff like that. So we'll be buying everything, ZipLine beers, for that.
You timed it very well. I was going to ask about security, and you have a mix of adults and young people. How are you going to handle that? And you, your timing was perfect.
So we have permanent fencing on two sides. The third side is our building, and so we have temporary fencing coming in to provide, to kind of fill in the holes. And we have wristbands that we'll be putting on people at an ID station that will be staffed by a private security company, trained in IDing people, and they'll have staff walking the grounds, looking out for people without wristbands drinking, as well as we'll have staff to kind of help supplement that as well.
Good. Are there other questions from the council? Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this item? Well, thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you.
Teresa, I think we're ready for the next one.
Sure. Application of Hunky Dory LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 120 feet by 65 feet at The Royal Grove at 340 West Cornesker Highway on August 25th between 12:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m.
Hello.
Hey, good afternoon, welcome back.
Hi, my name's Eli Maroc. I'm the manager of Hunky Dory LLC and the general manager of The Royal Grove, and this application is for an event on August 25th. It's the Lincoln Journal Star Ground Zero's 20th anniversary, I believe, and it's an event that's a barbecue competition and features bands as well, so it should be a great event. The barbecue competition is outside, and there's a fenced-off area. Our plan is to have an SDL for that area and serve tall boys outside. Later in the afternoon, all the events will move into the venue itself, and the bands and everything will happen inside the venue. And so, and Gretchen Royo from the Lincoln Journal Star with me is here as well, so.
Are there questions from the council? Councilwoman Eskridge?
Yes.
Got the name right.
So this is outdoors?
Part of it, yeah.
And music will be outdoors?
No, all the music's inside.
Okay, all right. That answers my question?
Yeah.
Other questions from the council? Is anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this item? And seeing no one coming forward, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa, what's our next?
Next, then, is our application of Kincaid Brewing Company for an SDL to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 42 feet by 225 feet at Lincoln Station Platform at 201 North 7th Street, number 108, on September 1st, 2018, between 7:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m.
My name is Cody Schmick. That's C.O.D.Y.S.C.H.M.I.C.K. My home address is 8720 Fremont Street here in Lincoln. We are coming to you guys to, we are actually a new business. We're going to be opening in about two weeks in the Hay Market.
Saw the sign going up last?
Yeah, we're super excited about it, and so we decided we are only going to be open about a week, and then we're going to, we're going to jump in on football season. So September 1st, I just have this one right now. I just wanted to see kind of what you guys wanted to see with that, being that we are doing an outdoor kind of tailgate type thing. We didn't, we didn't want to overextend ourselves, so we have a really good security team coming, four guys trained to keep, you know, keep that, everything in line and everybody, keeping with the law. It's going to be a 21 and older to even get in. We're not even going to do any of the wristbands or anything like that, but 21 and older to get in. We'll have guys circling it the whole time. It's butted right up against our building, and we're doing it on the train platform there, which was one of the reasons we were excited about going into that facility in the first place, just because the Art Group has quite a bit of private property there, and this is something that he kind of wanted to see, and so we're excited to do it. So I'll take any questions.
Councilwoman Eskridge?
Thank you. I see your hours. What are the hours you really plan to have?
So, no, we are not going to get there at 7:00 a.m. I did go a little bit bigger just because I wanted to make sure any setup or anything like that was covered, being that this is our first time doing this. I wanted to give ourselves ample time to set up and tear down. My guess is, and I've, my neighbor to the south is running the farmer's market still at this time, and so I wanted to make sure I didn't encroach on their territory as well. He says they're about out of there about 1:00, so I'm guessing we'll start setting up at around noon, and then try to get going shortly after 1:00 as they, as, you know, as we can. But we are definitely excited about being next to the farmer's market, and we do not want to hinder that relationship at all, so.
Okay, and then how about shut, shutdown time?
So we, you know, our hours are till 11:00, sorry, midnight on Fridays and Saturdays. We, once again, just wanted to give ourselves the flexibility to go a little bit later if, if the crowd's there, the security's fresh, you know, and everybody's ready to go. I mean, just to go to that city ordinance time, if possible, so.
Okay, we, one of your neighbors, then, I know you're a separate thing.
Sure.
But the rail yard, for example.
Yep.
It's my understanding that their practice is while they're open until 2:00, I think they shut down the outside stuff at 1:00.
I anticipate we'll be shut down by midnight, but I just, once again, wanted to give us that flexibility. If you guys would feel more comfortable going at 1:00, I'm open to that.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there other questions from the council? Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this item?
You can sit down, Cody.
Thank you. Teresa, what's our next item?
All right, next is the application of Pete Ricketts for governor for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 287 feet by 287 feet at 1425 H Street on September 1st from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., September 8th from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., September 15th from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., September 29th from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., October 20th from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and November 10th from 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. Hello?
Hi, my name is Corbin Waldron. That's C.O.R.B.E.N. and then W.A.L.D.R.O.N., and I live at 505 South 20th, Number 4, here in Lincoln, 68510. We have a SDL for the tailgates before the home Husker football games. We've been doing them for about the past 10 years, and due to a little change in interpretation last year, we first applied for the SDLs to receive donations from liquor wholesalers. We don't actually sell any liquor, but we just, it's just to accept the donation. It's an invite event. The residence, it's mostly in the backyard, but the inside of the house is open for people to come through. And then, as far as the timing goes, the reason some of the later games are 8:00 to 7:00 is just because they're not scheduled yet. We only run about three hours before kickoff to an hour before kickoff. So that'll be the time, once the later games are announced, and I can take any questions as well.
Are there questions from the council? Councilwoman Christensen?
So I'm curious about these morning games.
Yes.
Like breakfast beer or something like that?
No, no, no. The morning games are always a treat, but they'll just be beer and Bloody Marys. Nothing too crazy.
Okay. Other questions from the council? Would anyone in the audience like to testify on this item?
You can sit down.
Seeing no one for it, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have one question.
Corbin, please.
On the one date you have at 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., does that give you enough time to set up and take down?
Yeah, we, we are usually, have most of the stuff set up the night before, and then the gates don't open until 8:00, and we kind of start closing down about 15 minutes before 11:00 a.m., actually, so everybody's pretty much out of there by 11:00.
Thank you.
Or 10:00, sorry.
Other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Camp. Teresa, I think we have one more item here.
Yes, item 4H, application of SMG Doing Businesses Pinnacle Bank Arena for special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 190 feet by 143 feet at Pinnacle Arena, at 400 Pinnacle Bank Arena Drive. On various dates, we did receive a request from the applicant to withdraw this application.
Thank you very much. So we're at the end of our liquor applications?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Councilman Camp?
I would move approval, first of all, on item 4A, well, I move approval from 4A to 4G, and with that notation, as Mr. Eskridge said, of the restriction or condition in 4A.
Second. A motion by Councilman Camp and a second by Councilman Christensen. Discussion, Councilwoman Gaylord Baird?
I just want to say that I really appreciated Mr. Harris's testimony, and, as well as that of his employer, and he persuaded me that he'll take the responsibility really seriously, and I'm going to support that application.
Other comments from the council? We have a motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilman Christensen. Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Next, we have public hearing resolutions.
On item 4H, I need a motion to withdraw this item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I get a little ahead of myself.
I'd love withdrawal on 4H.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Camp and a second by Councilwoman Raybold for withdrawal on 4H. Discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Teresa, thank you for catching that.
Sure. Next are public hearing resolutions. Item 5A, approving an agreement among the city, the West Hay Market JPA, and TDP Phase 1 LLC, where by TDP Phase 1 LLC agrees to refund a portion of the TIF proceeds and rescinding the requirement that TDP Phase 1 continues to operate a public market space as part of the redevelopment project.
Good afternoon, would you say?
Good afternoon, City Council members. Tim C., City Law Department, here today to raise again the public hearing we held on July 9th with respect to the settlement agreement that's before you. The issue before you is obviously a dispute with respect to the public market as part of the rail yard redevelopment project that was approved back in 2012. You have been, I believe, provided with a motion to amend, to adopt a substitute agreement that includes some language to address the question of whether or not the use restrictions otherwise applicable with, throughout the redevelopment area will also apply in the public market area. This is done to simply clarify that and make it absolutely crystal clear that the language that creates the use restrictions for the entire redevelopment area will continue to apply in the public market area. I think the options before the council on this are fairly straightforward. We could require the developer to continue to operate a public market in the space. We could file some sort of suit to enforce the terms of the redevelopment agreement, or we can enter into the settlement agreement and hopefully resolve this matter moving forward. But with that being said, I believe the developer, the tenants have been in some further discussions, and I think they can present those to you, but I'd be happy to answer, I guess, any questions you might have with respect specifically to the settlement agreement or the proposed change in the language that was submitted to you.
Councilman Eskridge?
Yeah, Tim, I know in previous market, there could only be one liquor license there. Will that still be the case in this going forward? That wouldn't necessarily be the case. This area could be divided up. The idea was that that was a use restriction that was applied specifically to the public market area. Those would be eliminated, and so you could open the space up to new concepts.
Thank you. Councilman Camp?
Would that allow for overlapping liquor licenses, like in the rail yard itself, or how would they be separately fenced off?
They would still have, they'd still have to meet all the requirements of the state liquor laws, so I don't believe it would allow for any overlapping, but they would have to somehow divide those if they had different liquor licenses.
And what about the number of entities that would be in the public market area?
If the, if the language in the license agreement with respect to the public market area were stricken, they could divide it up as many times as they wanted in there, with, at least with regard to the license agreement and the public market area.
Is there any minimum number they would need?
Well, one, yeah.
Other, other questions from the council for Mr. C? Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item?
Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900, here in Lincoln. Appearing before you today on behalf of TDP Phase 1 LLC, which is the developer and owner of the Phase 1 project in the West Hay Market. City Attorney C. has correctly identified and accurately identified the settlement agreement in front of you. Since the continued public hearing, paragraph 2 has been clarified to distinguish between those public market restrictions contained in the Cube Plaza License Agreement and those Section 404 operating restrictions contained in the redevelopment agreement. Make clear that the changes to the settlement agreement make clear that the 404 operating restrictions were in place. Want to look a little bit about what has happened since we were in front of you back on July 9th. We have met three times with the interested existing tenants. Originally, the settlement agreement that's on your agenda was scheduled for a public hearing on June 25th. That was deferred until July 9th, and then it deferred until today's date of August 6th. Last Friday, which is August 3rd, we had a third of three meetings with the interested tenants, and that morning, we had, TDP Phase 1 had received five proposals from various tenants that were interested in leasing space within the public market for a variety of uses, including a sandwich shop, a bakery, a fish taco place, et cetera, some uses that sounded, at least on the face of it, consistent with the original intent of the public market and that would merit some further review. We have not had the opportunity to review those proposals. We have not had the opportunity to review those proposals, and the, the primary objectives that are intended to be achieved deal with, number one, activating the public market space, bringing more people to the rail yard area for a variety of different, uh, purposes. And number two, we have to make sure that the proposals will work financially for T D P Phase One. I found out this morning, too, that the original, uh, the Joint Public Agency had approved the settlement agreement back in May, but with the changes, I understand that the, uh, the settlement agreement will have to go back to the Joint Public Agency for its meeting on August twenty-third. So, the balance of today, I've been trying to figure out what I'm going to ask you to do today, which is not easy. Uh, I, I've identified at least four different options. Uh, from my perspective, I could ask you to vote today. That was the intent coming in, uh, certainly before last Friday, ask you to vote for, uh, the settlement agreement. I think that's still my first preference. I think the second option that I was going to request of you today would be involved with a motion to amend that I just circulated, a motion amend, number two. What it would do would propose to add a new paragraph to the settlement agreement, which would permit T D P Phase One to rescind the settlement agreement if they were able to reach agreement with the prospective tenants within the next approximately two weeks and work out a deal so that those new tenants could occupy the, the public market, and we could retain the public market restrictions. That is an option. Under that scenario, I would ask you to vote today, and then the motion to amend would allow the rescission so that we could retain the public market restrictions if we're able to work out those lease details over the next two weeks. And my client tells me two weeks is a very quick time period in which to negotiate new leases, and I understand that. I think the third option that I identified that we could request for today is to hold the public hearing today, and close the public hearing today, and defer voting until two weeks, which is August twentieth. Uh, that would give us the time to determine whether or not these leases could be signed. And the only additional information that would be provided to the council on August twentieth would be to, uh, inform you whether or not we're able to work out arrangements satisfying those two objectives with the negotiation of the leases. And then the fourth item, which is my least attractive alternative, is just to defer all matters for two weeks. And the reason I don't want to do that is we, we've been at this since May, and we need some finality to move forward this fall. And, uh, so I, I would request that we, uh, not defer, just defer the public hearing until, um, two weeks, that we actually have a vote today and move forward. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I assume you have some.
Questions, Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you, uh, thank you for being here, Mr. Houston. So, um, in visiting with, I don't, I don't think I see, um, Mr. Hunsaker here, who was, is he here? Oh, okay. And so, um, I, I think that before, um, I would make a decision on any of those, I'd like to certainly hear where they are on the, uh, challenge or change language and so forth. So I appreciate you very much. Thank you for working with them as we had asked you to do.
Well, and we've had three meetings, and they haven't been, uh, you know, we haven't reached full agreement, but we've made progress. Uh, are we going to get there? I certainly don't know, but my client needs to move it forward. The, the fall's coming, and, and we need to make a decision and move it forward.
Councilman Camp.
Thank you, Mr. Houston, and appreciate all the efforts you've put into this, as well as your clients. I'm, uh, going through your four different approaches. I guess if we went with this, uh, amendment that you've proposed, it pretty much puts everything in the hands of the, uh, uh, T D P folks to do that. And I feel a little hesitant for us just to unilaterally give away our oversight because of the, the overall redevelopment agreement we have as far as the rail yards concerned. And not knowing what would happen, I'm, uh, kind of thinking that we ought to leave public hearing open. I, I don't know how many people are going to testify today, but just so we know the direction of what things are going. I know that you express that as your number four alternative, but can you live with that so we can get a comfort?
What, what I don't want to have, i- if we held the public hearing open, I would ask you to limit it only to whether or not we've been able to sign leases. We've had a full public hearing. This is the second opportunity for a full public hearing today. I don't think there's going to be new information developed, and, uh, that's why we need some finality and move forward. Uh, so it would be my request that we don't just defer everything for two weeks, that we, uh, conclude the public hearing, close it, and then, uh, I, I think it would be acceptable, because of the J P A meeting at the, on August twenty-third, to continue, or at least defer voting until the twentieth of August. That'd be my preference.
I know we had previously, and I've talked to you individually about this as well, concerns about the good faith efforts to make the public market work. Uh, I think it's exciting that they're having negotiations here with, I guess we'll hear about it here shortly, to have that potential option, but that's kind of an important element to see that we can focus on that, because that was a piece of the rail yard when it was first, uh, initiated. And, uh, and then I've, I've had concerns, as you know, about the T I F interest rates that were
Sure.
put in there, and I really haven't had anything other than just some details.
I'd be happy to talk to you about that at your leisure.
Councilwoman Lamb.
So, um, you're proposing that in any of those instances of the four, that there would be a decision prior to the time that the J P A looks at this again? They, you said they meet the twenty-seventh, right?
I, I, yeah, I believe it's, uh, the city attorney's position that the J P A, uh, needs to meet as a board to approve the change to the settlement agreement that was approved by the J P A back in May. But since there's not a administrative officer, the J P A would have that authority otherwise. So I think J P A Board would have to meet to, because admittedly, we're making changes to paragraph two of that settlement agreement. Uh, and I, so the answer to your questions, yes.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? For this testifier? Don't go too far, though. Okay? Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, don't leave the room. Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
My name's Richard Hawerson, sixty-three eleven Immunos Road, and I only have one decision for you to make. Deny this. Uh, like I said, this is a public market, and we really haven't had much, uh, I mean, they really said what's going in there. What are we giving this up for? Uh, bakery, well, they've done that, they tried that, that didn't work. Taco stand, uh, I suspect beer is the main thing that's going in there, but, uh, I'm going to tell you a story. There's a guy, had a Camaro, met a girl, she had a Camry. They still got together, clicked, married, had kids. And after a while, she said, "Look, we got three kids now. For a second car, we don't need a Camaro, sell the Camaro." The guy thinks, "Hey, there's only one decision maker in this family, only one person calls the shop." And he realizes it's not him. So he puts an ad in the paper. He looks up Kelly Blue Book, it's worth eight thousand bucks top. Puts it in the paper, ten thousand bucks. Of course, doesn't get any calls. His wife says, "What's the deal?" "Well, I got the ad in the paper." They say, "Oh, reduce it to nine thousand." Still no calls. Finally, she looks up Kelly Blue Book and sees what's going on, says, "You'll put that ad in the paper for eight thousand dollars, the best offer." And, okay, so he sells the car. Well, like this, so as we had testimony in the last hearing this, they were charging above-market rates for the space in there. So no wonder some of these entities didn't make it. Now, you can't force them, or couldn't force them, to charge market rates, like the wife. You can't force it, but you can't re, you don't have to reward them for charging above-market rates. Again, I don't know what their business plan was, did they intend at some point for this to fail? Say, "Well, we'll just make it too expensive for him to happen." I don't know, there might still be people out there interested. If there's more publicity, if they have more of an outreach, or it might be somebody making a leather wristband or something, that still might be interested in this, if there's a reasonable rate. I guess another thing, too, again, once you give us up, it's gone. We have no oversight, nothing, uh, I mean, some regulatory oversight, but as far as, pretty much not what goes in there. And it is a public space, and it's nice. You, you go around there, you can sit in there, you don't have to buy a drink. Or if you buy a drink, you can sit there and nurse it forever. You know, you don't have a waitress coming by, or, you know, can't get you another one. It's cool in the summer, and it's warm in the winter. And, uh, I, at this point, I don't see, especially now, you know, it's in there, why you should give up the use of the space. Because again, once you give it up, it's gone, and we'll never have a public space in there again. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for this testifier? Would anyone else in the audience like to testify? On this, on this item? Should, it was incomplete sentence, wasn't it?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'm Mark Hunsaker, and I'm appearing on behalf of Yard Investments L L C, doing business as Gate Twenty-Five in, in the West Hay Market. Um, if you would indulge me for one minute, I would like to just suggest a procedural matter which might just cut this off today. Uh, Mr. Houston has suggested four alternatives of how you might act on this and, and, and yet give the tenants and the landlord a couple of weeks to try and work out a, a solution to this problem. I, I'm optimistic at this point that we have, uh, at least the makings of a, of an agreement. But as Mr. Houston said, two weeks is, is gonna, we're going to have to work hard to get it there. But rather than closing the public hearing, I would ask that you simply accept a motion now to defer the public hearing and action for two weeks. That will spare you the additional time that's going to be spent today on public hearing, and it will obviate the need for some things, uh, to, to be aired that probably don't need to be, that I think will be detrimental to the possibility of a, of a, uh, an agreement being reached between the landlord and tenant. Um, we would like to work hard over the next two weeks in good faith without, uh, further, um, aggravating whatever difficulties there have been between these parties in the past and try to work toward a solution that enables the, the city to maintain the public market in the current, uh, under the original intent, and to, um, go forward with a, with a revitalized area within the, within that project that will, I think, do good things for everybody there. It, it's just, the, the timing is such that it will not affect the ability to get to the, to the J P A with it, with a revised agreement. It will not, uh, sign, it will not result in any further delay than any of the suggestions that Mr. Houston suggested were his preferences. So we, I, I would like you to just consider moving right now to defer the balance of this public hearing and action for two weeks so that we don't have to go through all that yet today. Um, I, I think it'll, I think it will facilitate the possibility of an agreement and a, and a, an amicable solution to this problem.
Questions for this testifier, Councilwoman Lamb?
I actually have a question for law.
Pardon me, I should have said also, Mr. C.'s amendment is acceptable to us as well as to, to the other.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. C., thanks for coming back up. So, um, if, we're talking about, like, making a decision before the J P A. And so if we approve anything between now and August twentieth, are there changes that can be made to that agreement by the J P A on the twenty-seventh, or are we the final oversight?
Both entities have to approve it. There are three parties to that redevelopment agreement, the J P A, the city, and the redeveloper. The J P A is a separate entity from the city and would have to ultimately approve that agreement. So, um, who approves it last, I guess, is the final, um, decision maker with respect to that agreement. And, and I should qualify that it's not the twenty-seventh, it's the twenty-third. That would be the J P A's next meeting. But, but, um, it's not that one entity has final, um, approval over another. It's that there's three separate entities, all would have to sign off on the agreement.
And so any changes that are made, even at the meeting on the twenty-third, would then naturally have to come back to us? If there are changes made?
If, if the J P A, if this council approved a motion, uh, an agreement, the J P A made further changes on the twenty-third to what this council approved, I think, yes, the answer is it would have to come back to the city council.
Okay.
Point of order, though, we, we control the J P A with the mayor and Mr. Eskridge sitting on it, two of the three.
I see.
So, I would hope Mr. Eskridge would follow what we say, and then you could arm twist the mayor.
Okay, it was more procedural question, that's all, so.
That is, you're correct.
Timing issues. Thank you.
The other, the other thing is that if, if you make changes on the twentieth, I mean, it's, if, if we come together with an agreement by the twentieth, it's possible that it will require some tweaking of the licensing agreement that, not as drastic as what's on before you, but maybe some, some slight changes in terms of occupancy of the, of the public market area and possibly some uses in the public market area, uh, but very minor compared to what's on your agenda. But they would have to go back to the J P A for approval as well. And so I, I think, in that sense, having a public hearing to discuss those changes is, is advisable.
Councilman Christensen?
I appreciate the approach that we don't want to have anything said here today that would poison the well for an agreement. And I also hope everybody here understands that the council does not want to sit here like it's a court of law to decide between plaintiffs and things like that. So, I would prefer the option of delaying this to the twentieth with public testimony to remove some people's feeling that they might need to stand up now and say things that would be detrimental to the process of coming to a good agreement.
Councilman Camp.
I, I know we normally wait till the end of the, uh, public hearing on resolutions, but if we're going to do that, I think, so, just kind of a chicken and egg thing here. But as Mr. Hunsaker was saying, if they do not present additional testimony, I think, or I think if a who's us, maybe do something right now, go a little bit out of order there. Or we just, and if that doesn't pass to do what Mr. Christensen said, then you bring your public testimony forward. But I don't think it would be equitable to anybody in this room to have a chat on the com.
I'll make a motion now, that we delay this item until the twentieth of August with public testimony remaining open. So, we, just for me, we normally go through all the Right. and come back and make motions, and, and
But only one more item.
So you're doing this, doing it in this order allows the people in the audience who might want to stand up and say something the comfort that they don't have to. And just keeps the possibility of a goodwill arrangement intact.
We've sometimes done that.
So we have a motion by Councilman Christensen, second by Councilman Camp. Let's continue this conversation about, yeah, please.
So the motion was to continue public hearing in action to
The twentieth of August.
August twentieth, okay, thank you.
Would other council people like to testify? Councilman Eskridge?
Yes, thank you. Uh, and I appreciate the parties working hard to try to find a, a good resolution here. An agreement needs to happen. It needs to happen for the, for the benefit of all the parties, and I, you know, I think it's, I think it's critical, you know, to, to get this done. This is our second hearing. Uh, a third hearing is not much more attractive. I will begrudgingly support that, uh, just so that we do have that finished product and can, uh, can sign off on it. Hopefully, it's done. Uh, not a time to, to bring back all the dirty laundry or any of that stuff. Let's just keep focused on, on the final agreement, please.
Other councils, other comments from the council? Councilwoman Gayler Bear.
Is your int, I just want to clarify, is your intention to stop testimony at this point?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, we did advertise, so I want to make sure that anyone who does want to speak still has an opportunity to do that. Maybe there's no one. And then rebuttal as well, before we move on.
I don't want to take any of Mr. Hunsaker's time, Jeffrey Patrick, city attorney, but I would say that if you want to make sure that anyone who wanted to comment did, before you vote on that, you could call for more public comment. If nobody came forward, then you're not cutting off the public comment. I think that's your
Thank you, I felt like I should do that.
What about the opportunity for rebuttal? Is that also included? I mean, I, I
Well, if, if you ask for further public comment, and Mr. Houston wants rebuttal, or Mr. C., I think that would be their opportunity to come forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Hunsaker, please help with
What I would say is if, if you are inclined to, to accept the motion that's been made, everybody from our side everybody from our side of this will stand down and not say anymore.
Other comments? That would give me the opportunity to go through the ceremonial, asking for it. I would feel better about my life if I did that. Questions or comments from the council? Okay, here we go. Seeing one in the audience that would like to testify on this item? See no one, we have a motion by?
We need to.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Mr. Houston, would you like to have a moment for rebuttal on our current motion to delay with public hearing for two weeks?
I don't want to appear to be unreasonable. If we could reach agreement, if the lease proposals had been made a month ago, right after our public hearing, we wouldn't have this dilemma. I'm concerned that two weeks from now, you'll be hearing from the same party saying, well, we didn't have enough time. And we'll be in mid-September and this will continue to drag on. That's what I'm trying to avoid. We need to reach conclusion on this. And can we get a lease negotiated in two weeks? We certainly can try. I think the key determining points will really be the economics. Can we make the economics work? And I think that's the big question to answer. And I think that's a threshold question. If we can't make the economics work, we'll be back in front of you seeking approval of the settlement agreement.
And I will commit to you, I will not move to delay again.
For all matters?
On this matter.
Thank you. Where to go now? Yes. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Would you call the roll, please?
Sure.
What, who, what?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
I'd like to thank all parties involved and we look forward to voting on this in two weeks? Yes.
Next is item 5B, special permit 18026, application of Sandra Harder for a licensed early childhood care facility, including a waiver of parking requirements on property generally located at 2741 South 44th Street.
Hi, my name's Brian Hanson, B.R.I.A.N.H.A.N.S.E.N. Live at 2741 South 44th Street. The application should say Tanya Hanson on there. I don't know why it says Sandra Har, she is the landlord. Pretty much, our special permit already. We are running a daycare with up to 12 kids in that location. We are moving to a different house, so basically the only thing to be changed would be our residency. And George from Planning said that we should put a waiver in there for the parking because of, when we would have two stalls, but there's no sidewalk going through the driveway. So, but it's still part of the public right of way or something like that. So he wanted me to put that in there for it. And I'm up here for any questions if you need me.
Does the council have any questions of this testifier? Is, yeah. I'd like to have someone from Planning come up and help me understand a little better what's going on.
Is the address still correct, though?
27?
Yeah.
41 South 44th.
Okay.
Sorry. David Carey with the Planning Department?
Hi, Mr. Carey, thanks for coming forward. The applicant said he was encouraged to request a waiver because of the parking and the stalls and the sidewalk. I'm very puzzled, help me.
Well, and let's step back from that specific point. The special permit became necessary because of the, basically the rule for in-home daycare with somebody living in the residence is something that can be approved without the special permit. This proposal is, it's an existing daycare, not really changing the activity that's happening there, but it will be without the owner living in the residence. So that kicks it to the special permit stage. And that's really what has happened. And then within that special permit, the request came in to allow for basically one less required parking stall. And that's what has been addressed with the special permit as well. So Planning Department's okay with that and that's how it was approved at the Planning Commission and recommended for conditional approval back to you. So that's really the rest of the story.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Other questions from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you both. Teresa, I'm prepared for our next item.
That would be it on resolutions. We can vote on this item.
Oh, that's even better.
Item 5B is the special permit 18026 introduced by Christiansen.
So moved.
Second.
There are a motion by Councilman Christiansen, second one by Councilwoman Gayler Baird. Any additional discussion of this item? Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next then, our public hearing ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. Item 6A is creating a clean energy assessment district, which shall be known as the Greater Nebraska Pace District, to establish definitions to provide for financing, administration, and collections relating to energy efficiency improvements and renewable energy systems.
Councilman Christiansen?
Just for people's understanding, that I have received a request from the administration to delay this with public hearing to the 27th of August. There's just some more details the administration wants to work out. And at the appropriate time, I will move that, but we'll keep public hearing open.
Is anyone in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Seeing no one, I think we'll move to our next item.
Roy, did you want to just go ahead and make that motion now?
I'll move now that we delay this item to the 27th of August with public hearing.
Motion by Councilman Christiansen, second by Councilwoman Raybold? Any discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Next then is item 6B, change of zone 18009, application of the planning director for various change of zones, all with various waivers on properties generally located in the vicinity of the former Missouri Pacific Railroad corridor between Vine Street and North 66th Street.
Good afternoon, members of the council. David Carey with the Planning Department. Also have with us Stephen Hendrickson with our staff at the Planning Department, here to explain to you the item before you, which is related to removing a change of zone, excuse me, a change of zone to remove industrial zoning in an area along the Mopac Trail. You'll recall previously, last year, we had a similar item further to the west along the Mopac Trail. This item was, is similar in that nature to remove what we consider as part of our application, unnecessary industrial zoning in this area, especially in light of the fact that there is very nearby existing residential and homes, as well as the potential for significant increased amount of residential to the south in the Gateway area. We put this forward to you for your approval. This was at the Planning Commission. Did we receive unanimous approval for our recommendation, which is now a recommendation to you for approval of our proposal? And at this time, I would like to have Steve go through some of the details as to walk us through kind of what we're proposing and why that makes sense as part of this proposal.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department. The exhibit we have up here is basically the area of change of zone, which is basically immediately adjacent to Gateway. Gateway is Zone B5, our regional plan center. But this is an older area that is along, here is 66th Street, just in the middle. The Mopac Trail is an angle across it. This is an area that was I-1 zoning. In talking to the property owners here over the last three or four months, George Wesselhoff in our office actually met with the veterinarian who was on the site. He has been there and he recalls when they had the railroad trains actually zooming by on this site and rattling his building. So he was actually quite happy, the railroad tracks were gone, but the industrial zoning remained. And so basically, what we are trying to address is that since we have apartments, since we have residential next to it, and really the character of the area has changed over time, to change the industrial zoning. And here, what we've proposed is a mix of H3 commercial, highway commercial, which is in the dark blue. The pink is B1. There's also a couple of other minor adjustments that go along with it. We first sent letters out in April on this to the property owners. We got a few phone calls. We then sent out a later, another letter about our Planning Commission hearing. We've talked to all of the property owners in the B1. Matter of fact, on the east side of 66th Street, the southernmost B1 is a car wash that there's already a building permitted to demolish it and change it to an office use. So already, a lot of the owners in this area, there aren't really any industrial uses in here. The closest that came is there's an assembly facility and the assembly is allowed in the H3. So we're not really making any of the uses non-conforming. But there were a couple of people who followed the I-1 parking or maybe an I-1 setback. And so that's part of the reason for having the PUD here is it allows them to continue if they're just going to add on to their building to use those existing setbacks of the I-1 or the parking so that they're not made non-conforming. The I-1 does not allow any dwelling units and actually the H3 doesn't either. But because we view this really as in the future as probably a mixed-use area, we're adding dwelling units into the area. Matter of fact, the former McGuinness Ford, which was just to the south of this area in B5, you had an application before you a couple of months ago to change that for apartments as a part of the Gateway redevelopment. So we're seeing a lot more interest, both on the east and west side of Gateway for apartments, and so that's a part of it as well. I will note that the one letter that we had received in opposition was from Finkie Nursery, which is here on the east side of 66th Street. They also lease, or own, excuse me, a long, narrow piece of track that runs all the way over to 70th Street in which they have plants on it, but it is zoned R2. And so that's not a part of our application. We were just looking at the I-1. We've talked to them in the past, because they've had people off on, approached them about redeveloping. A significant portion of their property is in the floodplain, so anybody who's looking to redevelop it has to figure that out. It's right along the north side there of Dead Man's Run. It has a bike trail on one hand of this very long panhandle, so it's only 100 feet deep, but it has a 20-foot bike trail easement on it and the creek on the other side. So it presents some challenges, plus it's zoned R2, and it is adjacent to 15 houses. So what we said is, is, hey, when you have a redevelopment proposal ready, come in, talk to us, let's see if we can work out the details. And then you're really going to have to have a meeting with the neighbors to talk about what is really the most appropriate zoning there. Because we've had people talk to us about residential. We've had people talk to us about self-storage. And so maybe some of those works, ideas work, some of them don't. But it's going to be really dependent on the site plan because the site is so narrow. So even though they requested to have that added to this application, we said that's really a separate issue when you have a lot more details and we can work with the neighbors. But we wanted to continue forward with this. On the positive side, since we are adding the PUD to their property, it provides a lot more flexibility when they do come forward to redevelop, even though it's an H3 PUD rather than the I-1 PUD. With that, I didn't have anything further to add. I'm sure we're open for questions then.
Are there questions from the council, from this testifier? From these two testifiers? Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing one in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Okay. So let's go to the next one?
All right, next, I'll call item 6C, D and E together. They're the Annexation 18004, application of Southwest Folsom Development to annex approximately 42.49 acres of property generally located at the southwest corner of West Old Chaney Road and West Folsom Street, approving an annexation agreement for Southwest Village Heights First Edition between the city and Southwest Folsom Development related to the property generally located at the southwest corner of Old Chaney Road and South Folsom, and the related change of zone for a change from AG Agricultural to R3 Residential on property generally located at the southwest corner of West Old Chaney Road and West Folsom.
Good afternoon, members of the city council. Danae Kalkowski, appearing today on behalf of Southwest Folsom Development LLC. They own and/or have under control over 370 acres in Southwest Lincoln. And the applications that we have before you today are for an annexation agreement that's going to master plan infrastructure for about 140 acres and then the first phase of zoning and annexation for approximately 40 acres. So I thought it might be helpful to kind of just start with a little bit of a big picture out here and it'll show you where we've been and where we're going. Might have to start the bottom and work my way up. Highway 77 over here to the east and Folsom Street right here, circling the middle, and West Denton Road at the bottom. So back in 2006, we had the area that was the Southwest Village PUD that was approved. It had the commercial component to the east and then there was also a residential component. So it's been a long time, but finally that residential component is in the process of being developed. The first phase has already been approved and many of those lots sold. They're working already on the next final plat out there and so anticipate within the next, you know, 18 months, those slots could be sold out in that area that's already been annexed. So what we have before you today really is the next phase. The annexation agreement would cover basically this 140 acres in the middle. And then the first phase property would be down here in the corner to just continue the development to the north of what's happening right now. The positive thing about development in this area is it allows us to take advantage of a lot of infrastructure that's already been constructed out here. So if you recall, back with the Southwest Folsom, we put a water line in Folsom Street. So that's already there in existence. Paved to urban standards up just a little bit to the north of where the existing development is. So as part of this annexation agreement does anticipating continuing the urban construction of Folsom Street in that section from about here to Old Chaney Road. Probably the biggest thing really here is the sewer. And so we are dependent upon getting that Salt Valley trunk sewer over to serve this area. Right now, or basically 2016, when this area was put in the comp plan for future growth, the timing for getting that Southwest trunk sewer was basically in the next two years. And the proposed CIP in front of you now would continue that schedule and basically have that trunk sewer to the west side of Highway 77 in two years. And then we, basically just extensions from, from that trunk then will allow to really opening up of even a larger area out here. We are, as part of the annexation agreement, showing a location for a future park down here that would serve both this area and the area to the south. There's a trail planned really on the west side of Folsom Street. So we would contribute sidewalk portion and parks would oversize it. And I think there's impact fees available to pay for that. So overall, really makes good sense to continue the growth that started out here in Southwest. The reason we don't have the prelim plat in front of you today is that the city is doing a study on the roads out here. We have sort of a unique situation with some roads that aren't necessarily mile arterials and so they really need to kind of figure out what should the road network look out here so we don't overbuild or underbuild. So we should have the results of that study, I think, sometime maybe later this month. And then, once we have that, we'll come in with the details of the prelim plat for that, probably for that entire area. I think one of the main things why we're excited about continuing growth out here in the southwest part of town is that it allows us to have some more moderately priced lots. I think when we were visiting with staff and looked at some of the market information out there, there's a huge demand for homes in that 200 to 299,000 price range. So when you're buying lots that are a little bit more affordably priced, they allow you to have homes that would fall within that range or just slightly above it. And that's kind of the price that we're seeing down here. Would anticipate that continuing up to the north. Would also anticipate a mix of uses as we have in larger developments like this, but keeping them really priced in that range that would allow some more moderately priced homes. I think that's kind of the overview I wanted to give you. This allows also, you know, continued growth in many quadrants of our city. And so that's another big positive. I'd be happy really to answer any questions that you might have.
We have questions from the council? Councilman Eskridge?
I think I read that LPS is considering a school somewhere in the.
Right, so the LPS site that we're looking at would come in probably the next development to the north.
Okay.
They don't have the immediate need until there's probably a little bit more construction out here.
Closest fire service, is that Cottington? Or what's the closest?
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay.
Other questions from the council? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Anyone in the audience like to testify on this item? Thank you. Okay, Teresa, we're ready for 6F?
All right, next, we'll call items 6F through K. All right, next, we'll call items 6F through K. They are all related. The applicant is Lincoln Federal Bank Corp., who is applying for Comp Plan Amendment 15005, Revising the Future Land Use Map, Trail Route, and Commercial Center Designations in the Vicinity of South 40th and Yankee Hill Road. Change of Zone 15016A, Expanding the Area Included in the Wilderness Creek Planned Unit Development. Amending the PUD from R-5 Residential PUD to R-3 Residential PUD, and from B-2 Planned Neighborhood Business PUD to R-5 Residential PUD, and Approving a Waiver for Building Height Limitations From 35 Feet to 55 Feet On Properties Generally Located South of Yankee Hill Road Between South 33rd and South 44 Streets. Change of Zone 06075A, Amending the Wilderness Commons Planned Unit Development To Decrease The Area Included in the PUD By Approximately 20 Acres To Change The Zoning Designation For Certain Areas Within the PUD From B-2 Planned Neighborhood Business PUD To R-3 Residential PUD And From B-2 Planned Neighborhood Business PUD To R-5 Residential PUD, And To Approve Waivers Of With Requirements For Public And Private Roadways, A waiver To Allow Double Frontage Lots, And A waiver Of Building Height Requirements Within The PUD Area On Properties Generally Located West Of South 40th Street And Wilderness Hills Boulevard. Amending the Wilderness Commons Conditional Annexation And Zoning Agreement As Approved By Resolution A-85188 On December 15, 2008 Between the City And Lincoln Federal Bank Corp., Assuredy Life Insurance, B&amp;J Partnership, And Zen Tree 2 LLC Related To Property Generally Located South Of Yankee Hill Road Along The West Side Of South 40th Street. Change of Zone 07060B, Expanding The Area Included In The Wilderness Heights Planned Unit Development. Amending The Wilderness Heights PUD For Changes Of Zone To Certain Areas Within The PUD From B-2 Planned Neighborhood Business PUD To O-3 Office Park PUD. B-2 Planned Neighborhood Business District PUD To B-2 Planned Neighborhood Business District PUD. R-3 Residential To B-2 Planned Neighborhood Business District PUD. R-3 Residential To R-3 Residential PUD. R-3 Residential To R-5 Residential PUD. And B-2 Planned Neighborhood Business PUD To R-5 Residential PUD. And Approving Waivers To Building Height, Setback, Block Length, And Lot Layout Requirements Throughout The PUD On Properties Generally Located Southeast Of South 40th Street And Yankee Hill Road. And Finally, Amending The Wilderness Heights Conditional Annexation And Zoning Agreement Approved As Resolution A-85189 On December 15, 2008. And Amended By Resolution A-87461 On July 29, 2013 With The City Related To Property Generally Located Southeast Of Yankee Hill Road And South 40th Street.
Wow, that was a lot. Do you have a drink over there?
That's time to explain that.
I want to get you a glass of water or something. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Brad Marshall, with Olson Associates. On behalf of the owners, there are a couple of different owners within this few developments before you. First, I, the general area is basically in the 40th and Yankee Hill area, basically half-mile south, half-mile west, half-mile east. Planning Department has been somewhat patient with us, as we've kind of gotten everything together, and all the owners together, as we've gotten a plan and revised annexation agreements put together here. So, we're excited to see this come across the finish line. It's almost been two years coming, I think. So, this did start with the Wilderness Creek subdivision, which has come before you, and been approved. The primary reason at that time, we came forward with some of the changes, was the pipeline planning area, if you remember. So, the pipeline, it goes west-east, and continues down Yankee Hill Road, which, and then, in turn, created more of a commercial center. You've traveled between 27th and 40th now, you see more commercial in that area with Toyota and Lexus that have constructed in the last couple of years. And so, we have continued that master planning, basically, east to about 48th Street, as part of this plan. So, that's kind of the comp plan that's before you here. PUDs, there's three separate PUDs. The reason for some of these is the ownership that I mentioned. There is a land change between Wilderness Creek and Wilderness Commons, which is both the developments on the west side of the development. I'll point out, with Wilderness Creek, they are adding the area that is south of the Houhensy Drive, primarily because of the ownership. And so, that is being brought into Wilderness Creek, where Lincoln Federal Bank Corp. does own the rest of the development, and they can make some of the decisions a little bit easier without the partnerships. And therefore, Wilderness Commons, in addition, has been amended to exclude this particular area. So, all of the developments, you'll see a dramatic change in the site layouts. Commons, for instance, that's on the screen here, was a major power center, employment center, if you will, large-scale commercial and office-type uses. That has been dramatically reduced with this plan, with the R-3, south of Wilderness Hills Boulevard, and small amount of commercial-type uses along Wilderness Hills Boulevard, coming off of 40th Street. There is an R-5 area also with apartments, and all of the PUDs do have a waiver for the apartment height waiver, height waiver in the R-5, I should say, which does allow a little bit more flexibility these days with three, four stories for multifamily uses. With this change, with the reduced commercial and employment square footage of those, the previous approved plans that had before you, 40th Street, under the annexation agreement, was to be improved with that development. The developers are asking, with the annexation agreements before you, to be relieved of that responsibility for 40th Street. And now that those commercial uses are more generally along Yankee Hill, to approve a plan that would improve Yankee Hill from 40th to 48th Street through there. There is one exception, at the commercial area here, at Wilderness Hills Boulevard and 40th Street, the developers have the option to improve, well, I should say, are required to improve that in some manner to gain access to 40th Street. They could apply turn lanes to the development, but there is a condition in here to allow a roundabout to be designed, which would be the future, future size and capacity that would be what it would need to be for future 40th Street, when it was improved as well. The only other one that I have not shown yet is Wilderness Heights. This is, again, with Lincoln Federal Bank Corp. The amendment, the annexation agreement does ask for all impact fees for this development to be directed to Yankee Hill. The other, the other agreement does direct all the impact fees to 40th Street still. Even though the developers are not doing the improvements, those dedicated funds will still be earmarked, if you will, for 40th Street. And that would be eligible for reimbursement for the roundabout that I mentioned at Wilderness Hills Boulevard. With that, I'm not sure if I...
We have one minute left.
Yeah. It's under you or not, but with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilwoman Gayler Baird, then Councilwoman Raybold.
Thanks, Mr. Marshall. It was noted in the staff report that there's also some significant changes in the grading and drainage plans. Are you comfortable with those revisions?
I can speak to that, because we have been going through a lot of revisions. There's actually another development that is just south here, Wilderness Hills Residential, that was included, I should say, a major upgrade in the study that we have now completed. This does bring the Upper Salt Creek tributaries that extend up towards Yankee Hill Golf Course and east through Grandale Developments. And now, what I can say about that is, when these plans were approved back in 2006, '07, there was not dedicated floodplain. And so, we have upgraded the plans and the study to follow floodplain standards and do growth standards.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Raybold?
You know, Brad, I wasn't clear on what are the required infrastructure improvements to the roads that the developer is committed to making? Are you saying, is there some flexibility the developer can opt out of something?
Not necessarily. When they connect to 40th Street, for, let's look at Wilderness Commons here, for instance, when they make connection to 40th Street, they have an option to build turn lanes, which would increase capacity and the safety for turning vehicles into the development. But also, there is an option to utilize directed impact fees for reimbursement to build the ultimate facilities in that location. And so, there are those options, but regardless, there are requirements to improve 40th Street. Same thing on the opposite side of the street. If you were to align these, this is that same roundabout. And then, the improvements that I mentioned, Yankee Hill, that would have directed impact fees just from this development, that would help pay back the facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the council? Thank you. See anyone in the audience like to testify on this item? Seeing no one, are we ready to go to voting session?
We are.
No? Oh, good.
That concludes our public hearing. Ordinance's third reading. Item 7A, Approving The Closeout Of Completed Construction Projects And Transfer Of Unspent Appropriations And Cash, If Any, From Various Projects To Projects Where Additional Funding Is Needed Within The Public Works And Utilities Department And The Parks And Rec Department. Introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Councilman Camp, and a second by Councilwoman Raybold. Any additional discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then is item 7B, Amending Section 3.04.080 Of The Lincoln Municipal Code Entitled Tax Increment Financing Administrative Fee To Raise The Administrative Fee For Redevelopment Projects Receiving Tax Increment Financing. Introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Councilman Camp, second by Councilwoman Raybold. Discussion, Councilman Eskridge.
We have a motion to amend on this one, and I wondered if we could have Mr. Landis explain what the motion to amend.
Members of the council?
Give a second, though. Real quick.
Second.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me for jumping the gun. In our public hearing, both Councilwoman Lamb and Councilwoman Camp pointed out that there was a cliff effect to the way it had originally been written. And that was, that there was one rate, but if you got higher, then it started that second rate, but it began at the beginning, rather than transitioning across them. We rewrote it, consistent with their, with what they'd pointed out. This ends the cliff effect. It uses the scale of TIF. It goes 1% up to $1,500,000 of TIF dollars, and then 1.5% after that. It removes the cliff effect that was pointed out by councilmembers, and I think, I think it satisfies the objection that was being made at the time, or the concern.
I think we were talking about a $10 million before.
We were using construction costs then, not TIF dollars. Construction costs get turned into TIF dollars. So, we were using a different scale. And in fact, when we thought about it, it's easier to say, wait a second, what's the amount of TIF? The previous version would have been reduced to TIF by changing the construction costs, or the overall value of the project back to TIF. This uses the TIF dollars. It'll be cleaner, simpler, and easier to read. Those, when we guess the value or size of a project, it doesn't always come out that way, depending on what the assessor does. So, we can say it's a $30 million deal, but construction costs don't necessarily equate to TIF. This is the real dollar.
Comments from the council?
Yeah, I'll comment. This is cleaner, easier to understand.
It is, it is.
Well, instead of saying total value of the project, we're saying how much TIF is there, produced by the project.
But the TIF is generated and calculated based on the appraisal of the property, or on the...
In the end, tax increment comes from the growth evaluation from what the property was before the redevelopment till after it was done. Sometimes that takes time to get there, but that's the, when we say tax increment financing, that's the increment.
So, the fees are paid in arrears then? Because we don't really know about...
In fact, developers, and we agree to this, as to when they will pay this amount. Sometimes they know early on, and sometimes they do it late. We don't enforce a particular point of view. It depends on when they get their financing and when the project goes through. What it does is it relates this, this is written in the same way that Omaha writes theirs, which is a percentage of the TIF dollars, rather than a percentage of the construction dollars.
Okay. Councilman Camp?
Well, on your one and a half million there, that, and a lot of, if you say you had a $10 million construction cost, with some of the developer purchase and all that, aren't you getting around 20% you're allowing them on the TIF?
When we first began, it was 15%. The role of some recent state law changes may have moved that, but every one of those has been iffy. And in fact, I think you, on more than one occasion, have pointed out that our guesses prove to be different than what the assessor did. So, this is our best attempt, using the Omaha model, to be very specific, that the fee is based on the amount of TIF dollars that are generated.
Would you consider doing that 1.5 million to 2 million of TIF dollars? I think the way you've been doing that on construction dollars...
There's a gray area there. This is for the council to decide. We brought this in the form that we approve and support. On the other hand, we are the executive branch, you are the legislative branch. I am saying that it's drafted in a form that I bring the administration's approval for it, and I think it's relatively consistent with where we've been, and then with this addition of, you know, the higher markup, if you will, as you get further along in a project. The, for example, the Raymond Brothers project would have been less than this 1.5. The Windstream Building for the Telegraphistic, less. The Telegraphistic, a good deal more. City Center, a good deal more. But those are the kinds of, that's where the breakpoint is now striking us at.
I guess if we got this on the floor, I'd make a motion, maybe make that 2 million of TIF dollars, actually.
So, you're making a motion to amend the amendment?
Is that...
That's what he said.
Are we able to do that before we consider the amendment?
Well, I think it would be proper. We have the amendment, we'd have to amend it before we could do it.
You kind of have to do it.
Jeff Capatrick, City Attorney. No, I think it would be appropriate to amend the amendment. If the amendment to the amendment fails, then you have the original amendment, which also may fail, but as long as everybody on the council understands, when you're voting, what you're voting on, I think it's appropriate to proceed with an amendment to the amendment.
So, we have a motion. I don't think we have a second to that amendment to the amendment yet.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lamb. So, there's a motion to amend the amendment to raise the upper limit, lower limit, from 1.5 million to 2 million?
Correct, and that's of the TIF dollars.
It's the upper limit, yeah.
But the way I understand this, would you have, if they had not changed the language, the metric, from the total value of the project to the total value of the TIF, would you have
the metric, from the total value of the project to the total value of the TIF, would you have asked for that to be amended too? No, I think the 10 million. There, as Mr. Landis was saying, there's kind of a gray area in there, but we've been doing somewhere to 18 to 20, 22% in there with this developer purchase. And so if you did the 20%, that would be the 2 million that I'm suggesting. So I think it does flow with what they've had, and, you know, you may recall, we didn't have any TIF fees up to a couple of years ago, so I think that that states it more clearly.
So a project with, that receives TIF up to 1.5 million now would pay a set of fees, and 1.5 million and $1 would pay a different one.
No, currently it's just 1%. It's 1%.
1%, and you're suggesting we change that?
And what is originally proposed was to do a minimum of 2,000, which is new, and then up to 10 million of construction costs. That would be 1%. Over 10 million of construction, that would be one and a half. And now we're saying we're, instead of the construction cost, Mr. Landis is talking about the actual TIF granted, and I think 2 million is closer to about what that 10 million of construction cost would be. So that's why I'm suggesting the 2 million.
Mr. Landis, could you help me again? I have another question. I'm sorry to, so I...
It's my role and obligation to be as helpful as I can.
Most of the projects that we see that receive TIF financing, do they fall in the category where they'd be above the 2 million?
The ones that wind up on the front page of the paper are going to be larger than this, and the ones that we do in North Lincoln and areas outside the downtown could be less. There isn't much, there isn't a great deal of difference between what we're talking about here. What we're, what we now have is 1%, right? This says there's another fee. And when it gets bigger, there's more work. The Telegraph District had a, what, 191 pages in it? Or was it 291 pages? And it took us 18 months to, to do it. So we are trying to recover some costs here, and if you pick 1.5 million and if you pick 2 million, we'll be able to live with it because they advance from where we are now, which would be 1% no matter what. And this, as you know, when you get, you get of a size and have a lot of time, we're going to ask a little more for the contribution we make. The smaller the project, it's quite likely the less complex it is and the less time we spend. That's why I think the distinction's reasonable.
Thank you. Councilman Camp?
I'm trying to think if we still have a cliff here. I mean, what happens when you get, so you're saying, say you have a, a, a two and a half million dollar TIF project. So we're saying on the first 2 million, they'd pay 1%, and then a two to two and a half million would be the one and a half?
Well, you're saying that at 2 million...
That was what I said last week.
That's right. In other words, right. It's written now in what's being offered to you that from $1 to $1,500,000, it's 1%. And the first dollar after that is 1.5%. But it doesn't change, it doesn't go back to the beginning, which is, I think, the point that Councilwoman Lamb pointed out, that before the 1.5 went back to the original first dollar. This doesn't. It picks up that change dollar, and then it raises the fee from 1 to 1.5 or to what this council chooses to do.
And I'm saying, I'm suggesting the 2 million in my amendment to the amendment.
I understand you are.
Other conversation discussion?
I should ask, Councilman, was there any follow-up question you want to ask?
I'm good. Okay. Are there other questions of Mr. Landis? So we have a motion to amend the amount from 1.5 to 2 million.
This is amending the amendment.
Amending the amendment. Any additional discussion? Councilwoman Lamb?
Yeah, I just want to say that I appreciate Mr. Landis taking that consideration into mind that we were talking about last time, this was before us, because I think that is, having the cliff is somewhat problematic and being able to know that you're, this is your expenses first million and a half or 2 million, and then after that, it's 1.5%. So I appreciate the work that you did on that. Thank you.
Councilman Eskridge?
I'm not sure if my math is right or not, but it, it looks like to me that $500,000 difference between half a million or one and a half million to 200, to 2 million in TIF comes down to something like $2,500 is the difference in what they would get. Does that sound right? See the wheels turning?
Well, you'd take 1.5% of 5 million, or 500,000, that's going to be 7,500.
But it would just be the half a percent because they'd still be paying the, the 1% rate, yeah. So I think, I think 2,500. That's, so it's not a big, it's not a big amount. The only thing that concerns me, and this is, one of the uses of those funds that has been mentioned is for affordable housing.
Yeah.
And we keep hearing from people in the community that, you know, we really need to do something about affordable housing, and we don't have a whole lot of tools in our tool belt to, to work on that. So, so that's, that's my only concern about it.
Other comments on the motion to amend the amendment to the original motion? Okay, so I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion to amend the amendment.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
No.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one.
Now we have a motion to amend number one, number one.
Which substitutes the ordinance.
Which substitutes the ordinance. So any discussion? We had, that motion was by Councilman Camp, second by Councilwoman Raybold. The one we just voted on was motion by Councilman Eskridge and second by Councilwoman Gaylord Baird. So we got that one in the books. No, you did not?
The other way around.
Okay.
The motion to amend number one
Yes.
was Eskridge and Raybold.
Okay.
Okay.
Since I screwed that up, is there any discussion about that? Hearing done, let's call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And now the original motion? Discussion?
This is a good thing.
We had a motion, then we had the hard copy motion to amend, and then we made it, and Councilwoman Christensen, it reminds us that this is a good thing, and I will ask to call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Our resolutions on first reading are items 8A through G. Ordinance's first reading are items 9A through E. Our pending list date certain are items 10A through D. And our regular pending list are items 11A through C.
I move adjournment.
Second?
And a motion by Councilman Christensen, second by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Chobe?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
We adjourn.
4:37.